First and foremost, a happy new year to all and welcome to a new year. Public announcement in accordance with chapter 231 P.R. Law 1975, this public reorganization meeting of the Sayable Board of Education has been established by fax and copy of the public meeting notice to Home News Tribune. In addition, copies of the announcement of this meeting have been sent to the borough clerk and copy of the notice of the meeting has also been posted on the bulletin board outside the office of the secretary timbor. Please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, the announcement of the official results for three year term candidates. Phyllis Bakko, total 3,077 votes. Beth DePinto, 2,965 votes. Michael J. Mackinon, 2,911. For all board members here this evening, the reading of the school board's association code of ethics for board members. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. desired changes shall be brought only through legal and ethical procedures. I will make decisions in terms of educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal and will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well run. I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gains of friends. I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the school which, if disclosed, would legally injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendations of the chief administrative officer. I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of their duties. I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution. At this point in time, I'm going to ask the three board members that were elected to come forward for the swearing in. We'll proceed to the podium. We'll go in alphabetical order with Mrs. Bakko first, Mrs. DePinto, and then Mr. Mackinon, if you would. Phyllis?
(inaudible)
I, Phyllis Bakko, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Phyllis Bakko, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. 194-1 and that I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A COVID-12-1.
Mrs. DePinto? Have your sister joining you?
I, Beth DePinto, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Beth DePinto, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of a Board of Education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. 194-1 and that I am not disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1.
I, Michael Mackinon, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Michael Mackinon, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of the member of the Board of Education and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God. I affirm and declare that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to R.S. 194-1 and that I am not disqualified due to the conviction of a crime or offense listed in NJSA 18A 12-1. I want to thank my good folks.
Congratulations to all the board members elected and congratulations to the board. Looking forward to another successful year with the board. At this point in time, we're going to move to the roll call. Mr. Baucka, there. Mrs. Bakko.
Here.
Mrs. Blum.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski, there. Mr. Syak, here. Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon.
I am present.
Mrs. Strapp.
Here.
And Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Next order of business is the nomination for the office of president for the Sayable Board of Education. Do I have a nomination from the floor?
I would like to nominate Mike Mackinon for president.
Move by Mrs. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Mrs. DePinto. Are there any other nominations? With none, we're going to take a roll call to close. Mr. Baucka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
We are going to now move forward with the nomination of Mr. Mackinon for president for the Sayable Board of Education for the upcoming year. Do I have a motion?
(inaudible).
Motion again. It's formality. Second?
Second.
Mrs. DePinto, thank you. Roll call. Mr. Baucka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Mackinon. At this time, we'll take nominations for the position of vice president of the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Beth DePinto.
Do I have a motion for Mr. Pinto? Do I have a second? Second. Okay, I have a motion, second, for Mr. Pinto. Do I have any other nominations? Having none, we take motion to close. Mr. Baucka?
This is just to close?
Just to close the nomination.
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon. Yes. At this time, then, I'll take a roll call vote for Mrs. DePinto as the vice president of the Board of Education. Need a motion and a second again, please.
I'll make the motion.
Same people?
Second.
Okay, there are motion and second, roll call vote, please. Mr. Baucka?
No.
Mrs. Bakko?
No.
Mrs. Blum?
No.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Congratulations, Mr. Mackinon. Congratulations. Hey, Dr. Labby, do you want to take us through the reorganization agenda?
Excuse me?
The reorganization agenda? Item number nine of the reorganization meeting is the approval of our meeting dates for the upcoming calendar year. Item number 10 is the naming of the board secretary for the coming year, Mityo DeAndrea, myself. Item number 11 is the public agency compliance officer, again, myself. Number 12, a qualified purchasing agent, again, myself. 13, naming of Tamika Reese as affirmative action officer. Number 14, the treasurer of school monies, Mr. Kranowski. Number 15, the naming of our attorney for the school year, for the upcoming year, my apology. Item number 16, our board approval requested to set policy in certain fiscal procedures for the period of January 6, 2015, through January 5, 2016. Item number 17 is the official newspaper, the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger. Item number 14, the official depositories of the bank, and a question has come up in the past, what you see is only the last four digits of the accounts, so no one can actually see the account numbers. Number 19 is the name of the auditors for the upcoming year. And that concludes the reorganization section. Okay, after I open up for the public for any comment on those items, as a board, do we just want to vote on all of them versus having to go through each one? Yes, you do. Then we can just do that, okay?
I do have two questions.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Syak.
I'd like to recommend on the meeting dates that we cancel the November 3 meeting date, that is Election Day. We did not have a meeting this year.
I'm okay with that.
So I don't know if the rest of the board is in favor of that, but I know the polls close at eight o'clock, so they would close basically like in the middle of our meeting.
Does anybody have any objection to deleting that from?
That's one less meeting, I don't...
Yeah, but I think we needed a meeting last year. I think it was a long time by skipping it. We could just change it. I mean, I don't care about coming Election Day, but if we don't have one, I think we should just move it if people don't want to do Election Day. Move it, like, to where?
You...
Like a different day?
Would you like to do it on October 27?
Does it matter if we meet on Election Day? Like, does it matter to us?
Well, you can do that. I'll make this simple. I'll make a motion to cancel the meeting. Let's see if someone seconds.
I'll second.
Okay. I need a motion and a second, and the motion is to cancel the November 3, 2015 Board of Education meeting which falls on Election Day. I got a motion and a second, so just need a vote. My apologies. Mr. Syak made the motion, I didn't see who made the second. Mrs. Bakko made the second. Mrs. Blum? I apologize. I heard it from that side.
So easily confused.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Mr. Baucka?
No.
No, not canceling. Correct. Mrs. Bakko?
No.
No to cancel. Not no to cancel.
No to cancel, no.
No, not to... No to cancel.
No to cancel.
Thank you.
No to cancel.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
And I apologize, we're in out of order. And Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
November 3 is removed. Any board members have any issues on the reorganization for open up for public for comment on it?
Just one more question from Mr. DeAndrea. With regard to Amboy National Bank, we've got a lot of accounts there. We've got sufficient insurance, correct, with regard to our money that's there?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have. You have a board comments. If not, at this time, open up for the public portion for any comments just on the reorganization, the appointments that we're going to make. We're going to have another agenda presentation which is the normal business meeting agenda and then we'll open up for the public again and then we'll have another open public session. So if anybody has any questions about the 19 items that we just spoke about now?
Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
I need to say on number 14?
Okay. Do you note that, Mrs. DeAndrea? Already have it noted. Okay, you got it down already. Seeing nobody from the public, then I'll just entertain a motion to accept the reorganization agenda with the exception that... Well, there's no exception because the meeting was... I'll make that motion. Need a second?
Second.
And roll call vote to approve the reorganization agenda. Mrs. DePinto, seconded?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Baucka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakko?
Yes.
Mrs. Blum?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
And Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon?
Yes.
Okay, we have the reorganization agenda approval. Dr. Labby? It's your show now.
Okay, thank you. Do we... We're going to do a public participation?
We did.
All right, great. Do you have a presentation? Want to help me out?
Two very important presentations for you today. Way back in the fall, we intended to kick off something we call Vision 2030, and it's actually a concept that was developed last spring by our Board of Education. And it's a new form of strategic planning that (beep) that many industry leaders have been using over the years that we are adopting here in Sayable. Fabulous. Did you see that? Okay. I'll just get it back. But we've adopted here in Sayable for the purpose of taking a look at a long-range plan to accomplish long-range goals for our students. Rather than tell you what Vision 2030 is, we have a very special presentation for you tonight that we had hoped to kick off this concept back in October when we did our State of the Schools address. Unfortunately, for reasons many of us know, we did not have that presentation, but we would like to, as we are turning the corner into a new school year, an exciting new school year, we did want to introduce this concept warmly to you. And as we were planning the State of the Schools address, I got together with Sandy Paul, who is our chief technology officer, and we began to brainstorm about how is the best way that we can communicate this pretty complex concept to the community? And we immediately thought of our studio production class and program at Sayable Women World High School. And Mrs. Paul reached out to Mr. Kaiserman from our TV studio, and along with his students, they got together and put together some magic. So without steering any more thunder from Mr. Kaiserman, I'd like to introduce him to you and ask him to come up here with his students and to present to you our Vision 2030 kickoff video. Mr. Kaiserman?
(inaudible). Apparently, we don't want to... They took away the magic. I'll just put it down. (inaudible). Hello, Board of Education. Good to see everybody and hello all the people in the audience and the public and thank you for being here. I'm not going to talk very much because it was really the students who did a really great job and they're quite amazing students and great people. Mrs. Paul and Dr. Labby had a great idea that these students were able to take and run with and make their own production. So I'm very, very pleased. It took a lot of time. We also worked with some students over at Truman School, and that was a really great production because even they got to see where they're going to be in 2030, hopefully in my TV class, right? So it was kind of neat to see where their future is going as well and where their lives are going and to see great high school students working with some really great first graders and other people at elementary school level. So who would like to give a quick two or one-minute little speech about a great video? Anybody? They weren't ready for the speech either, so I'm very happy Dr. Labby did this to us. Amanda, would you be kind enough, since you helped edit and bring it on the spot, just a little bit about the video and...
(inaudible).
Anything else? All right, then I'll just summarize it. The load is shy, it's kind of funny here with the camera people who like to be filming all the time. One of the great things about this video project is that it was a really hard task to take in what a great vision, Vision 2030, is and make it into what, a 510 video. So to take a complex issue and to really shrink it down took a lot of work. There was so much information that these students had to think of and what to put in and what frankly to take out. So I think it was a great project, and I'm speaking on behalf of them because they really did this, so we want to let you watch it and hear any feedback. We want to hear more. Dr. Labby, thank you for your opportunity to do this project, and Mrs. Paul, who's spent countless hours with us as well, and she's gotten to know the students too. So thank you very much and please enjoy the presentation. (applause) Yeah, Mr. Syak was telling John and I about Vision 2030.
Oh, really? That sounds cool.
Yeah, you know what'd be a great idea?
What?
If we go talk to the kids that Vision 2030 is going to affect.
That'd be awesome. Let's go. So you guys want to know more about Vision 2030 and how it affects you?
Let me tell you what I learned the other day when I presented to Mr. Syak, our Board of Education. Oh, hello, Mr. Brown. (inaudible) 2030, do you know that? (inaudible). I'm sorry, I was supposed to focus on the future. I'll be back. (inaudible). If you want to go on to the sun, you're a virgin. Yeah, I'm a virgin. (inaudible). So you'll be graduating college in 2019. Yes. For our first graders at elementary schools, you'll graduate college in 2012. Oh, okay. (inaudible). Okay, you're telling me something like that. What actually begins with you. The Board of Education is interested in eating with students. We want to get to know where our students, not just the eating with students, not just students who are eating with students. (inaudible). Well, we want to get a solid understanding of the students that we serve and how we can create a program for all of our students who choose or address. Now, I don't even know what the future's going to be like in 2030 because it's 16 years away now. Your guess is as good as mine, and and that's the hard part about Vision 2030 is we don't know what the future's going to hold for us, but we can begin to get an understanding by talking to leaders of industry, of business, talking to leaders within our community about what types of values our students should have. We can talk about what types of expectations there are for careers as we approach 2030 and what our competitors are looking for for our students. It's also important that we invite college admissions counselors as well. How do our students stack up when they actually leave college and don't like our admissions? And what can we do to improve their chance to getting into the university of choice? Well, it's a really good idea. I'm glad you're liking it. (inaudible). Six words, once upon, always upon, and that's the key part of Sayable. When we look at our community, we're very, very friendly with their rich sense of issue. And we look at Sayable Memorial High School, it was few high schools in the entire country that hadn't anything that was as rich as ours. And part of Vision 2030 is about really defining what it means to be at law and making sure that we use that recruitment process or our teachers to make sure that we continually view that culture that all of us here identify with as well. Now, what do we need to make basically vary the most of the fact to model? The most important part of life is the relevance piece because when we look at the relevance which should actually work, which you probably give to the students the best, sure, when you look at the whole relevance piece, we need to create a curriculum for the courses that we're offering, but more about what you want's fine and engaging and what stage is actually preparing you for if you're a work leader, you choose whether you're graduating in 2015 or graduating in 2030. Oh, so now you're going to have an idea in 2030? I mean, it's honestly brilliant. And you can find out more about Vision 2030 by opening our website, I mean, maybe that we've got several K-12 programs, and the main opportunities for community members is to see this. It's a good idea, I'd love to make a vote. Excellent. Thank you, fellas. Do you need to vote? Do you need to hear about Vision 2030? Fantastic, thanks. Hey, you! Thank you! Do you have any idea of Vision 2030?
No, it's not. Well, technically, it's an organization vision.
Technically, it is a long-term goal that has been collectively agreed upon by an organization.
That this carries the Sayable Board of Education.
Where they identify their current state and the state that is most desired by everyone.
Vision 2030 is about recognizing and responding to the demands of tomorrow by taking the appropriate actions today.
It doesn't matter if our first grader who is just beginning their school career or a freshman in high school who is just starting to think about college.
The better the college leads us far over to give us insight into what the future will demand of our children.
So why are you guys putting the word about Vision 2030?
We feel it's part of our duty as citizens to take part in our community and spread awareness of future plans for our school and children.
And we always do what we can to be good citizens.
So what are some goals of the district? Well, by June 30 of 2015...
The Board of Education will define Vision 2030 by...
Defining expectations of what high school graduates of Sayable will need in order to successfully enter the workforce of the year 2030.
And define a culture that will enable them to create an environment where such achievement is possible. I want to be a teacher. I'm going to go to college. I'm a teacher. I am Vision 2030! Mr. Kaiserman, can we ask that you and your students once again rise so we can give you another big round of applause? Guys, on behalf of the Board of Education Administration, we would like to sincerely thank you for all the hard work and meticulous attention and detail that we know you put into it. We are so proud of you. You rock. Thank you very, very much. And we will be sending each one of you a certificate signed by our Board of Education President and a letter from myself. So thanks again for the time you put into this and for coming out tonight to help us kick it off.
(inaudible) graduated college in 2019.
Yes.
For our first graders at elementary schools, they'll graduate college in 2013.
Oh, okay.
(inaudible)
Okay, Johnny, say something like that.
Well, actually begins with you. The Board of Education is interested in getting students to really get to know where our students, not just the eight who stand, not just the students who need instruction. Well, we're looking to get a solid understanding of the students that we serve, and how we can create a program for all of our students who choose or want to grow. Now, how do we know what the future's going to be like in 2030? Because it's 16 years away now. Your guess is as good as mine. And that's the hard part about Vision 2030, is we don't know what the future's going to hold for us. But we can begin to get an understanding by talking to leaders of industry, of business, talking to leaders within our community, about what types of values our students should have. We can talk about what types of expectations there are for careers as we approach 2030, and what our competitors are looking for for our students. It's also important that we invite college admissions counselors as well. How do our students stack up when they actually go to college and don't like our admissions? And what can we do to improve their chance to getting into the university of choice? Well, it's a really good idea, I'm glad you're liking it.
Well, this is all about the Board of Education.
Six words: Once upon a time, always upon a time. And that's the key part of Sayerville. When we look at our community, we're very, very friendly, with their rich sense of issue. And we look at Sayerville Memorial High School, it was few high schools in the entire country that hadn't anything that was as rich as ours. And part of Vision 2030 is about really defining what it means to be that long, and making sure that we use that recruitment process, or our teachers, to make sure that we continually view that culture that all of us here identify with as well. Now, what do we need to make basically vary the most effect to Sayerville? The most important part of life is the relevance piece. Because when we look at the relevance, which you actually work, which you probably give to be in your class, sure, when you look at the whole relevance piece, we need to create a curriculum for the courses that we're offering, but more about what you want to find as engaging, and what stage is actually preparing you for the year that you're going to choose. Whether you're graduating in 2015, or graduating in 2030.
Oh, so now you're going to have a dream in 2030?
It's honestly brilliant. And you can find out more about Vision 2030 by looking at our website, I mean, maybe that we've got several K-12 webnet. And the main opportunities for community members is to get involved. It's a good idea, I'd love to get involved.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
(inaudible) Fantastic, thanks.
Hey, Hugh.
Thank you.
Wait, Hugh.
Do you have any idea of Vision 2030?
No, it's not. Well, technically, it's an organization vision.
Technically, it is a long-term goal that has been collectively agreed upon by an organization...
That this carries the Sayerville Board of Education.
Where they identify their current state, and the state that is most desired by everyone.
Vision 2030 is about recognizing and responding to the demands of tomorrow by taking the appropriate actions today.
It doesn't matter if they're a first grader who is just beginning their school career, or a freshman in high school who is just starting to think about college.
The goal of the call leads us far over to give us insight into what the future will demand of our children.
So, why are you guys putting the word about Vision 2030?
We feel it's part of our duty as citizens to take part in our community and spread awareness of future plans for our school and children.
And we always do what we can to be good citizens.
So, what are some goals of the district? Well, by June 30th, 2015...
The Board of Education will define Vision 2030 by...
Defining expectations of what high school graduates of Sayerville will need in order to successfully enter the workforce of the year 2030.
And define a culture that will enable them to create an environment where such an achievement is possible.
I love you. I want to be a teacher. I'm going to go to college. I'm a teacher. I am Vision 2030!
Mr. Kaiser, can we ask that you and your students once again rise, so we can give you another big round of applause? Guys, on behalf of the Board of Education Administration, we would like to sincerely thank you for all the hard work and meticulous attention and detail that we know you put into it. We are so proud of you, you rock. Thank you very, very much. And we will be sending each one of you a certificate, signed by our Board of Education President, and a letter from myself. So, thanks again for the time you put into this, and for coming out tonight to help us kick it off. Great job. And as we stated in the video, so eloquently and so profoundly, we are dedicated to Vision 2030, and we are looking forward to sharing our strategic action plans with you as the year progresses, prior to actually asking our Board of Education to approve them, so we can begin implementation. We have already shared these plans with the Board of Education, as well as with our building principals, and we're going to continue to share them as we move through the course of the school year, with our faculty and staff via our committee meetings. So, we're real excited, and we're again thankful for the manner in which Mr. Kaiserman and his students helped us kick off this very, very important initiative. And I see some TV folks here today. Gosh, it would be great, within 10 years, to see you guys behind those cameras, representing Sayerville, as proudly as you did this evening, so thanks again. We have another very special presentation for you tonight. It is a budget presentation that will be made by all of our elementary school principals who are in the house as I speak and ready to roll. But before we go ahead and bring them up, I just want to review our budget calendar with you. As you know, we've gone through several presentations. All of these presentations can be found on the website. If you go on our website and you click 2015-16 Budget, you can go in and see each one of these presentations. This evening, as you can see, January 6th, our elementary schools' principals will be presenting. Our middle school and high school principals will be presenting next, on January 20th. And we're actually going to submit a prior preliminary budget to our Board of Education by February 1st. And of course, you can read the rest of the dates on this lengthy calendar. So, without any further delay, I'm very, very proud to present these next individuals. I've worked in several districts, and I have to tell you, I have never worked with a more polished, dedicated, and committed group of people than the elementary school principals here in Sayerville. So, it is my privilege to bring them up to you right now, so they can present to you their proposed 2015-16 Supplies Budget.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I just thought the old mic was a little tinny for me, so I just wanted to be able to present to everybody in a very clear, articulate way. It's my privilege tonight to be able to kick off our presentation, and those of you that know me, know I'm going to do it a little differently. So, sit back and listen to an approach that I want to bring to you from a theoretical basis, in terms of what we're looking at tonight in terms of numbers. In a few minutes, my colleagues and I are going to be presenting to you some numbers, which you normally would associate in terms of a budget. Before I do that, though, as educators, we know that we need to employ cognitive psychology in terms of preparing our learners to understand what we want to say. So, what I'm going to try to do, so one of my goals for tonight, is to try to get all of us to understand a number of different things. One, is that there's a theoretical basis in terms of what we're trying to present to you tonight, in terms of these numbers. Two, that I'm going to bring in some cognitive psychology, some exercise physiology, some molecular biology, and some neuroscience, in terms of how we develop these numbers. Now, you may say to yourself, because right now your brain is firing at all different areas, because your neurons are responding to this information that I'm trying to present to you. I'm asking you just to bear with me, as I bring this together for you, so you understand why these numbers are going to be very important. Number one, as you're processing the information I'm giving you right now, many of you are trying to be able to take this idea of numbers and look at it in a very sequential, linear fashion. In other words, if I'm going to get to C, C is the product of A adding to B, multiplying times B, subtracting from B, whatever. I'm asking you to understand that, as you do that, that you're limiting yourself somewhat in terms of the perspective, in terms of what these numbers are going to mean. And I'm going to try to share with you why that is so. Some of you, though, are going to be a little different in that. You're going to be looking and hearing those numbers from the perspective of a very, very big picture. And so, you're going to hear in your own ears, and developing your brain, some visual images in terms of what these concepts will mean. I'm asking you for tonight, to be able to bring those too. And I'm going to present to you why it's important. We've heard a lot tonight about Vision 2030, which is why we're here. What I want to present to you tonight, though, is that we saw those... They were from Truman, weren't they? We go to the best. So, we look at these first graders there at Truman. We know they're going to graduate in 2030. But what I want to present to you tonight, is that 2030 is larger than that. It's a concept of not only the students who are going to graduate in 2030, but the students who are going to be coming to us as kindergartners in 2030. Because of that, I want you to just think about for a minute, as I'm talking tonight, about the plasticity of the brain. Because the brain of a student who's going to come to us next year, five years from now, 10 and 15 years from now, that brain architecture is going to be very different than those cute little first graders we saw right there. Why? Because everybody within the sound of my voice tonight, has a brain that's developed, in terms of the neurons, that's going to be very different than those children's brains. Because of the fact that with the advent of technology, we know that neurons are going to respond to genetic development, which we know is going to be impacted because of a process called epigenetics, electrobiology. That brings the fact that the brain, the neurons, the genes that are forming those negative, those electrical impulses that are forming meaning here, are going to be changed because of the fact of the change in lifestyle of what their brain is doing, due to technology. We know from the advent of the iPad, of the advent of technology, the digital age is changing the way the brain is developed. Those of us who are sitting here have a brain that's developed basically through the area of linguistics, of reading. What I'm showing with you tonight, is that as we present these numbers to you, that that brain of the children who are coming to us is going to be very, very different because of the advent of technology, which is going to change their genes. Through exercise physiology, we know that we can change DNA of any gene, based upon a particular type of exercise. What we do as elementary principals every single day, is we lead schools that get children to read. You're going to hear in a few minutes about character education. You're going to say, "Why is character education important?" Character education is vital to reading, because we know that a child who can't read is not going to have a very high self-concept. A child who can't read and write is going to say, "I can't learn." A child who can't read or write is going to get in trouble, in a lot of different ways. We know from all sorts of research, especially the Peri-H scope preschool educational longitudinal study, that children who do not have a preschool experience, do not have the experience in terms of being able to read very early on, are going to be more of a detriment to society, because A, they're not going to be able to graduate from high school, B, go on to college, possibly, C, they're not going to be able to have a very effective job, D, they're not going to be able to then conform to the economy, and E, they're going to then become more of a burden on society, because it's going to cost society more to be able to compensate for that loss of the single event of reading. What we want to present to you tonight, is that process. We know that it exists, as I tried to share with you, and hopefully in my little brief overview here, you get to understand that, one, the brain's very placid, the brain is constantly moving. Your brain right now is firing all different directions of understanding the executive functioning of what I'm trying to say to you. B, you're trying to then take in all that auditory stimuli I'm trying to bring to you. In a few moments, your retinergic parts of your cerebral are going to fire away, because you're going to be seeing all these numbers here. And you're going to say, "How does this all make sense?" We're just asking you to hear what we have to say, because we deal with this every single day. And the point of this whole presentation is to have all of us understand that we need to put our emphasis on reading. If children don't read to us, and don't successfully become those readers, especially in that kindergarten and first grade time span, we can talk from here to the homeschool home, in terms of high school, but it's just not going to happen, folks, because elementary is where it happens. And we are the people that make that happen, in every day in all of our schools. And so, we think it's a great privilege to be elementary school principals, because the fact that we get to lean, motivate, and inspire those teachers and those students every single day. This morning, in the snow, a little kindergartner walks up to me and goes, "Mr. Byrne, if I wear my pajamas inside-out tonight, will you promise me there's no school tomorrow?" I said, "I'm afraid I can't do that." That's that little brain there, that we're going to help develop, to take care of that whole vision for 2030. I'm now going to turn the microphone over to Ms. Davis, who's going to continue with the explanation of these various goals, but understand right now, your neurons are firing. And I want you to keep them firing, because I want you to understand this whole theoretical basis, in terms of why these numbers really make sense. Ms. Davis.
Great, thank you, Mr. Byrne. How's everyone tonight?
Great.
Hope you're one, you can be better than that. We're talking about children, thank you for the opportunity. We're talking about children's brains, and getting them is giving opportunities, many opportunities, to read, to write, and to compute. And with that said, we also want to develop our children's global competency. What I mean by that is, we want to also introduce our students to the world around them. We want to introduce them to the many challenges globally. We want to give them a conscientiousness about the issues, the problems of our world. And then, we want to ask them the question, "How will you fix that?" So, global competency, global citizenship, is one of the pieces that will go along with our budget, because we want to prepare our students for the future. In 2030, we want them to meet those challenges, to compete with the world around them, and to give answers and solutions to maybe problems like cancer, which is rampant in our world, or starvation, or growing crops. I understand now they're growing crops on top of the roofs of buildings. So, we want our students to be prepared for this type of creativity, and this type of critical thinking. We want to make sure that all of our students have an opportunity to learn.
Intelligence plus character is the goal of education. Sayerville's mission is to educate today's learners to be tomorrow's leaders. We must assist our students, in collaboration with their caregivers, in developing students of good character. We take a proactive approach at the elementary level. We model good character, we teach good character. In our schools, character education is being taught in classrooms infused into lessons. We have theme-based learning activities, programs that focus on the six traits of good character, programs that focus on anti-bullying, and good citizenship. We hold spirit days that celebrate our unity and our diversity. We have school-wide themes with initiatives that reward our students. We have after-school programs that expose our students to different activities and ideas. At the elementary level, it is our goal, alongside parents, to develop the future leaders of our diverse society, so that they are competent and contributing members of this society and the workforce.
What we're saying is that we are making a deliberate paradigm shift. You can tell, my mom always said, "You don't need a mic, you don't need a mic." And you can see they have to remind me that I need a mic. Well, we're making a deliberate paradigm shift, from teaching to student learning. And what I mean by that is, our focus now, along with the state, our nation, our role, is about student learning. What do you need to know? That's what every single teacher, every single grade level, every single school, all of our elementary schools, our district, our middle, our high school, that's the question. What do you need to know, to move to the next level? The next question, how will we teach you? What resources will we use? And then, after we teach, how will we know that you've learned that information? How will we assess? And then last, what will we do when you have not learned that information? That's the goal of true education. And so, we've all been working for the CIA for many years. How many years have you been working in the CIA?
Twenty-one.
How many years have you been working in the CIA?
None.
You've been a CIA agent?
Eighteen years.
Seventeen.
Around seventeen. We are curriculum, instruction, and assessment agents. You're supposed to smile. That's what we are. We're working rigorously on curriculum, instruction, and assessment. We're working with writer's workshop. We're working with our supervisors intensely, with our daily cafe, our daily five in our cafe. That's where students learn to read to self, and read to others. We're working with DRAs, where teachers have an opportunity to assess the learning and the reading of each of the students, each year, each semester. We're also working with Envision. We're working with Socratic circles, where students have an opportunity to develop discussions with each other, intense discussions, deeper learning. We're also working with the depths of knowledge and castes, levels of questioning, where we ask the types of questions where you cannot just respond yes or no, but you have to give us more. What do you think? What's your perspective? How would you do it differently? We're also working with our Common Core standards. Each of our students, each of our grade levels have specific standards that are identified. We want our students to have a simplified way of learning what those standards are, so that they know exactly what it is they have to learn. So, teachers know the standards, our administrators know what those standards are, our parents and community know what those standards are, and that way, we prepare ourselves better for 2030. And also, self-assessment. We learn how to have self-reflection, and we also learn how to self-assess ourselves. And last but not least, we prepare for our state assessments, our PARC preparation, and using that teaching, we use our Charlotte Daniels team.
Just heard Mrs. Davis speak about the PARC assessment, which will happen in the spring, and it's an online assessment, standardized testing. And as you know, we live in a very technology-based society. When you think about it, our elementary students only know a smartphone. You can see in a mall, at a restaurant, they pick up an iPad, they pick up the smartphone. It's just, it is second nature to them. So, we need to prepare our students for this technology-savvy world. In the classrooms, you will see our teachers and our students using different technology resources to enhance instruction and engage our students. You'll see smartboards, you'll see NOCS, the Tanberg system, iPads, and Chromebooks. You also, and if you have children in the district currently, you may have heard of Learning A to Z, or RAS Kids. These are online programs that our students are using, both in the classroom and at home. The students are using technology apps on the iPads. Our new math series, Envision, has an online component to help the parents understand the new math, and to also work with their children at home. Also, in the classrooms, you will see the iXL Math Program to help students with skills. Many of the schools are partnering with parents, inviting them into family nights, technology nights, to display what we do in the classrooms and what we have as a district, and family and math and reading nights, to help parents and give them an idea of what other things they can do to help their children. It is our role to give them the tools that they need to be lifelong learners.
You heard Mrs. Davis speak about a paradigm shift, and you heard Ms. Morris speak about lifelong learners. We stand in front of you, not as the principal of the Sims-Sopper Elementary School, Arlith School, Truman School, Eisenhower School, and Wilson School. We stand together, united as one hand, that is working as one unified... We stand together, united as one hand, that is working as one unified elementary body. We understand that what we do in the K-3s impacts 4 and 5. We understand that if we speak to Ms. Morris about the needs that she has in the 4 or 5, we can do something to address those needs at the K-3. This is a paradigm shift from get my budget for Eisenhower and get my budget for Arloth to let's get a budget that focuses on the goals and the goals that you've seen today. So, we're working towards that. You saw the video today about 2030 and the vision of 2030, and one of the things that it doesn't mention is the fact that five years ago, definitely 10 years ago, the jobs that are high demand now didn't even exist 10 years ago. So, we have to develop students that are fluid and plastic, the way Mr. Byrne said, that can adapt to a changing environment that changes relatively overnight. You know, one of Sereb's famous sons sang 30 years ago about getting a job on the dock and about marrying his high school sweetheart. That dock job, they're dwindling, they're disappearing, they don't exist, and for our students, we have to prepare them for that life. How do we do that? Any effective teacher, Mrs. Davis talked to you about Charlotte Danielson. Charlotte Danielson is the observation tool that we use now, and teachers and administrators are now speaking the same language. We know what it takes to be an effective teacher. We know how to help our teachers be effective lifelong learners. Because one thing an effective administrator and an effective teacher is going to tell you is that you cannot teach what you do not know. You cannot teach a student to be a lifelong learner if you yourself are not one and don't practice it. So, we decided to get together, and we developed a professional learning community as administrators. As you've seen tonight, we each possess a different strength and ability. And trust me, if you were confused with Mr. Byrne for the first three minutes of this presentation, sit with him for half an hour. But we each have a strength, and we bring to that table our strengths. We also bring an honesty to that table where we say, "We don't know that. Help us with that." So, that we in turn can go to our teachers and our faculty meetings, and we've turned our faculty meetings from a place where we just read a laundry list of things that have to be done, and we've turned them to a place where teachers learn and discuss and evaluate each other and our performances and our students' performances so that at each and every turn, we are developing the best practices in the classroom. How do we do that? I discuss professional learning communities, not only for our teachers but our administrators, district-wide professional development, professional development days, as well as webinars that go out on a monthly basis, as well as articles that go out from our offices that we discuss at faculty meetings and at data gathering meetings. We're using data, not just collecting data, but really interpreting it. What does it mean? How can we change our performances in the classroom? How do we change our student performances? How do we change our own performances so that we can better develop our teachers so that they can change their performances or enhance them? We talk about new teacher mentoring. It's not only important to become a new teacher and to be welcomed into a building, but to be welcomed into a community that's going to address their needs. Because new teachers have a three-year shelf life. One-third of every new teacher that gets hired leaves, not just Sereb, across the board, across the United States. We need to not have those shortages anymore because it costs us and our students a lot more in the end. We're discussing increased horizontal and vertical alignment, which means that we're talking to our 4th and 5th grade, we're also talking to our middle school colleagues, we're also talking to our high school colleagues. What do they need and how can we help? With parents, we've discussed a little bit, so I won't bore you with too many details, but one of the best things that we have right now is parent portal usage has gone way up so that we're having discussions about when Johnny's not being successful, not five weeks from now, not three months from now, not when a report card goes out, but that week, that day, those discussions are helping us help our students. All the things that we've discussed today aren't just ideas. They need funding, they need to be backed up, which is why our goals are tied into, as Mr. Preston's about to show you, our goals are tied into the fiscal responsibilities that we took on to develop our budget. We hope that we gave you an idea of what it is that we're doing. We like to say, we're not just wiping noses and tying shoes. We're preparing our students not for 2030, but a life beyond.
Good evening. So, as we developed our budget, I have, I'm going to go through the presentation. Each of the board members has some reference materials to go along with in case you can't see the presentation. But it was developed uniquely, it was developed, again, as a team. We came together for the first time in a long time, instead of five independent people developing five independent budgets, but developing it cooperatively and collaboratively. So, you'll see that as I go through the presentation, you'll see the numbers as a whole, you'll also see the breakdowns for individual schools, so we did keep that intact also. The other thing that happened was, we did take a look at our goals, and we did tie our budget and the numbers that we're projecting to the goals. When our goals are student learning, reading, literacy, we're backing those goals with the money that we're projecting for our budget. One of the things that affects a budget is the enrollment. So, the first slide that we have is the projected enrollment. At the top, we see our current enrollment, which is 2014, 2015, and then we're projecting some changes in that enrollment. What we did was just carried over each of our grade levels to the next level. First became second, second became third, and so on and so forth. And we kept our numbers flat, so what you see in there is just a reiteration of what is currently in kindergarten. Typically, that's what we see, the numbers are pretty average for what we're expecting. With that said, sometimes the numbers are going to increase class sizes, sometimes we may need some more sections, that's still yet to be determined, but we are keeping in mind students and the student learning as we develop our budget. The first slide that we have is the summary. Again, I'm going to just show the whole entire thing, and again, this is in the pages that the board has. It is everybody's budget together. I will break down each one of these in the following slides so that you see it, but we have eight line items that we're discussing, and for the most part, we're looking at flat budgeting. What we have budgeted for this year, we're going to stay consistent with and remain the same, except for two main areas. The first area is our library. We are looking to increase the library budget by about 50% to get some new items in there, new titles, some periodicals that students enjoy reading, and some audiobooks, which helps with our goals for teaching, reading, and literacy. Supplies and materials. This line, Ellen, this is our 600 account. This is really for health supplies and materials. This discusses like everything from bone bolts to stock epifans, gauze, things that they need in the nursing office. So, again, we're looking at a flat budgeting process for this. Everything's going to remain the same. Each of our schools is going to be looking at these numbers, which is the same as last year, and the breakdown is represented graphically. This is going to be the same concept that I carry through for the rest of the presentation. You could see that the schools will always be the same color. We have Arloth in blue, Eisenhower in orange, Truman is gray, yellow will be Wilson, and the S U E S will be green. Laboratory supplies, again, this is one of the items that we really want to increase. We want to support our goal for college and career readiness and mainly literacy, teaching kids how to read and read at an earlier age. So, we're looking at increasing that line item across the board in each of the schools so that we are consistent, again, uniform in our thought process. So, we're looking at increasing that, again, to get the audiobooks, to get the periodicals, to get the new titles that children enjoy reading. The numbers will look like this, again, pretty consistent with what we, across the board, and the graphical representation looks like this. Again, based on class, school size, it is consistent. Rentals is one of those items that all schools have. We have copiers, we have water coolers, we have some other items. Again, these items are maintaining about the same, so this line item is pretty much taken care of for us with the contracts that we have for the rentals. So, again, consistent with last year and a pretty even distribution for all schools. The next line item that we have is administrative supplies, and this is items that we need in the main office to support our teachers, to support our students, and to run a professional building, postage, general ropes, general supplies, and equipment for the main office. Again, flat budgeting philosophies, what we had this year is pretty good, and we're expecting to maintain that amount. All right, again, pretty even distribution amongst all buildings. Clean repair and maintenance is a line item. A lot of our equipment that we have does need upkeep, so we have calibration of audiometers, we have piano tuning, we have laminators that need to be maintained, some phone service in there. So, again, what we had in the past seems to be working, a lot of this is flat rates or consistent. The laminators, the laminator costs what it costs, and we're maintaining that in our budgeting philosophy. The rates are pretty similar to what we had last year, and again, the graphic represents... Our Writer's Workshop supports our Envision Math Program, supports the Daily Five and the café, and all those items that the teachers use on a daily basis and the students use on a daily basis, a lot of the consumable supplies that are used. So, again, for the most part, we were able to keep things fairly consistent. You'll see a difference of $94,000, and that is because we were able to budget accordingly. Last year, we picked up a six-year digital license for our Envision program, so by putting a little bit more money up front, we were able to have, see that decrease in spending this year, and we'll be able to maintain that over the next couple of years because we have the six-year digital license. So, we're seeing that difference of about $94,000 as a district because of our spending philosophy that we incorporated last year. So, those will be our projected amounts, and again, our distribution is pretty consistent. Textbooks, this is a line item to replace older textbooks. Sometimes some of our textbooks get worn out and need to be replaced. Sometimes we have increase in numbers, and we have to get some extra textbooks because of increased student numbers. So, pretty much, we have a standard amount that we use every year, that we project to use every year, and again, that's flat from last year. We're expecting to use about the same amount that we had last year. And again, our graphical representation. And then, other objects, this is a line item that includes furniture. We put our character education supplies and programs in here. Levelled libraries is one of the biggest things that we put into our other objects. These are library sets, not into our school library, but into the individual classrooms. Part of the programs that we're incorporating with the Daily Five and Writer's Workshop is to have students reading at their level in their classroom, to be able to read every day, to get more books into the hands of children, and these levelled libraries will help do that. So, we're putting a bunch of money into this account to support literacy by getting levelled libraries into the classroom. So, that's our projected amounts, again, flat from this year, and our graphical representation for that. So, hopefully, you'll see that this budget was developed to be fiscally responsible. You'll see a savings or a difference of over $84,000. We're hoping that you see that it was based on our goals. We kept our goals up here to show that we are supporting literacy, that we are supporting the delivery of the curriculum, instruction, and assessment, that we have technology incorporated in there, and we're helping to prepare our students to be college and career ready, and mainly that it was done collaboratively, as a team of five elementary principals working together with one vision. Thank you very much.
Board members, any questions?
Board members, anybody? Ms. Sack?
First of all, I definitely agree it was fiscally responsible because you're basically flat to down, which is great. I loved the presentation on the first half. I guess where my disconnect is coming is I see a lot of, you know, supporting, maintaining, supporting, maintaining. My question is, with a flat budget, are we doing anything different coming up next year? Are monies being replicated? Are there new textbook series? What new things are we doing? Or, Dr. Labby, are you choosing, because of other priorities, to invest in other places because the elementary schools are doing fine at this point, and it is about maintaining? We've got higher priorities. That's the piece I'm not getting.
Well, certainly, there is a big picture, and we've had several discussions with our elementary school principals. They felt that the budget they presented tonight is based on the funding that they're going to need to accomplish their goals. You'll see later in future presentations that we will be potentially allocating some of the monies that you saw in terms of that difference, maybe in other areas such as personnel, such as technology.
Okay.
They spoke at length about literacy and the need for our students to be able to read critically and to analyze complex texts at a very high level. Again, back to Vision 2030. In 2030, think of the informational text that those adults will need to critically analyze and make decisions about. So, later on in our presentations, we will present you options, ideas, strategies that encompass some of that difference.
Okay, and that was the piece that I was looking for. Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Backo?
Dr. Labby, you had said once that you were a proponent of zero-based budgeting. Do you plan on approaching this budget and that philosophy?
Yes.
You do?
Yes, and as you can see with the slide presentation, I mean, this obviously will be on the website. They broke it down in terms of what we spent in 2014, the end of 2014, what we budgeted for this year, and what they're proposing for next year. So, does that answer your question?
I was good at yes.
Okay.
Any other board member questions? Thank you for the presentation. Obviously, if you're a parent with a student in one of elementary schools, you can see after this presentation that they're in very capable hands. Great presentation.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Byrne, for that.
My neurons are firing right now.
It could be a good thing. Okay, continuing with the agenda, approval of minutes. Everybody should have gotten a copy of the minutes for the Reagan Executive Session of December 16th meeting. Does anybody have any questions, comments, additions, additions to minutes? If not, I'll accept the motion to file and accept. Can I have the motion to file and accept in a second?
Mr. Mack, and I apologize. Who was that?
Beth and Mary.
Apologies, Beth.
Could you do a roll call vote, please, for the minutes?
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Ms. Backo?
Yes.
Ms. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
I haven't got abstain. I was absent from that meeting.
Ms. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Ms. Frapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Dr. Labby, please take the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, if I can direct your attention now to Vision 2030 Finance and Infrastructure. Numbers one and two, we have cooperative purchasing contracts, one with Middlesex County Ed Services Commission for broadband wide-area network services. We're also, through the Middlesex County Ed Services Commission, asking you to award us a contract on... us a contract for the termination of our, upon the termination of our current contract with LightPath via Middlesex County Ed Services Commission. That is number two, you can get that can be found on pages eight and nine by their link the resolution. Items number three and four, we have workshop fees and overnight accommodations. You can find that on page nine. Item number six, there's a student council trip with transportation to the College of New Jersey. You can find that on page 10. Item number seven, we have two added district placement tuitions and other special and related services, including some bedside tutoring for several students with disabilities. Any questions on 2030 Vision Finance and Infrastructure?
Are you saying that we're not going to be using LightPath anymore?
Ms. Indian?
Currently, what's occurring in the state is the state has put together a consortium where all school districts are joining on and they broke it up into several regions throughout the state. And what they've done is on a large scale, they went out and procured the cost of bringing down, down the cost of broadband and internet service. So by part of the accountability regs, this brings us with that as joining on. And the cost of these services right now are considerably less than what we're currently paying. Because we're currently under contract, we have to stay with where we are and then move over. It's initiated by the state to get, to bring down the cost of all our statewide cost of our broadband and internet service.
Do you have an estimate of the savings?
At this point in time, no, because when they bid it, they bid it at, and hopefully Mr. Glock and Lloyd can help me with this, at 1,000 megabits and we are currently running at like 10,000 megabits. But what we did look at was a considerable savings in that if we were going to move to the 10,000. But once we sit with them and look at the cost of 10,000, that'll help us get to that point. But we're not at that point because we're not in the loop to renew the contract at this point. But this all went out recently, so we wanted to make sure we're in compliance.
Any more questions? Okay, at the beginning of this school year, I received an email from a parent who's concerned about the 2015-16 school year calendar. And we made a promise to that parent that we would get that calendar out to the community as soon as possible because we recognize sometimes travel plans are made within a year or two. You did get delayed in that process, but we'd like to present as item number one in Vision 2030 Student Achievement, the 2015-16 School District Calendar. Later in the spring, we're actually going to ask the board to approve the 2016-17 calendar so we give people ample time to prepare and plan for trips and so forth. So to move ahead a little bit further, if you look at the calendar that's presented to you, because we have a later Labor Day, this calendar is going to ask for our staff to come back on September 1st and for our students to actually begin on September 2nd. Due to the winter that we experienced last year, which we're telling other kids not to wear their pajamas inside-out, by the way, this year, because we do not want to experience a winter like that, and so far, so good. We did, with this calendar, build in three snow days, or three days in which we may have to close school for emergency reasons. So at the box below, you'll read a little disclaimer in which we're stating that we are building in those days in case we need them, but also how we are going to give those days back. Furthermore, the disclaimer states if we ever have to add more days, heaven forbid we have to do that this year, please, but if we do have to do that, it describes how we will add days on to the school calendar.
Dr. Labby, just a note on that disclaimer. The box, I think, is cutting off some of the text and "unanticipated" is misspelled. But in your defense, I called you with changes at five o'clock, so...
Yes. And Excel does not have spell check.
There you go. I just wanted to correct it before it goes out.
Thank you very much for making that. We will correct that. That will be placed on the website, but that is due in a note. Thank you.
Can you explain the 182, then? There's three days in 182, or, does this add up to 182 this calendar?
Yes.
And there's three days in...
It actually adds up to 185 days.
It does, okay.
185 days, but we will take three days back if we don't use them.
Okay, and another question. I looked up Easter and Passover and they weren't together. So, and I don't know, I mean, I Googled it and it said Easter was the fifth and Passover was the third. So is there a reason why we're going the week before as opposed to the week after?
That just happens to be the way we selected it. I believe that, that's something I can look into, Roy, if you'd like.
Mm-hmm.
That's the way it fit in best to the calendar.
When is Easter?
I was under the assumption that...
When is Easter? All right, so that would work.
I was under the assumption it was the 28th.
It looks like it is Friday, Good Friday, often, and the week after.
It's the week after, but when is Passover? I don't even, Jonathan?
I'll get back to you on that.
I know, I'm pretty certain, but I don't want to say that publicly, that Easter is the 28th.
Easter's the 27th, I believe.
Right, the 27th.
So we're going the week after Easter. We're taking off.
It begins, and again, it begins at the 25th, yeah, and goes to the... I believe it also includes Passover. But again, I'm not certain. That's why I don't want to be certain when I say that.
We're going to school in... October 12th. Throw the dismissal of the students.
Is your calendar...
Any other questions on the calendar?
Yes.
So Passover is April 23rd.
The day of or night of?
Well, it says Passover in 2016 will start on Saturday, the 23rd of April, and will continue seven days.
It's the 29th or the 22nd.
Okay. Okay, so...
Mrs. Chark?
What?
Right. Yeah, it's too far away for the... Any other questions pertaining to the calendar? Okay. Also, as you can see, we are asking the board to approve the revised Grades 1 through 3 physical education curriculum. In Vision 2030 Governance, we're asking you to approve revisions to the Use of Facilities policy, local wellness and nutrition, health examinations, and technology. With regard to the use of school facilities, that is both a regulation change and a policy change. Any questions on governance?
Is this first reading?
First reading.
First reading?
Yes.
Okay. I have, should I ask my questions now?
Definitely.
Okay. For, on page two, B, you had crossed out...
Of what policy?
The first one, the first page. You had crossed out nonprofit uses and changed it to the Serval Rec Department. Why are we taking out the nonprofit community?
Because it was the recommendation of the Finance Committee that we want to adopt a new fee schedule and that the rec department uses be free and that all other nonprofits be charged according to the new nonprofit fee schedule that the Finance Committee adopted.
Do we have that fee schedule? Is it here? Is it attached?
It's not part of the policy. It was separate. It was done by the Finance Committee. We wanted to adopt the policy before we asked you to approve the fee schedules.
Okay, and what have we done in the past with the Serval Rec Department? Have we not charged them?
We have not charged the Serval Rec Department.
Okay, so why are, so why are we changing then? What?
Right, we're still not charging them.
But we're just putting it in there. But we never charge them anyway. But we're adding the words.
What we're essentially doing is, as you can remember, in terms of Vision 2030, some of the finance goals we have identified, one of them is trying to raise miscellaneous revenue. We want to try to utilize our facilities to raise miscellaneous revenue to offset the taxes for our community. One way in which we want to do that is by charging nonprofit and profit organizations what we feel is a reasonable rate to utilize our facilities. Currently, we believe that the rates that we have in place are detractor. We cannot market our buildings in terms of facility use with the current rates. So what we also wanted to do was recognize the fact that the serval community does rely on the school district for the use of facilities, particularly with regard to recreation and other nonprofit, smaller organizations like the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Lions Club, which will also, through the authority that I have, will be able to allow them to also use our facilities for free. But if there is a nonprofit organization in serval or outside of serval that's not affiliated with recreation and is not one of those organizations that I just named, we do want to charge a reasonable fee so that we can raise miscellaneous revenue to offset our taxes.
Okay, so my question is, like, PTOs are part of that nonprofit. Is that on the fee schedule then, that they're not...
We would include that as a school activity. That's A on the policy. The use of school facilities for activities related directly to the educational program of the district shall be without cost to the user.
Where's that?
Next page, first page. First page on the bottom.
Yeah, but that just says, it will give priority, order to use. It doesn't say anything about cost.
No. Page one, flip to the top, page, and then at the bottom, A.
Okay.
The use of school facilities for activities related to the educational program and district operations shall be without cost to the user.
And that would include the PTOs?
That would include PTOs. Yes. It would include sports.
It would include sports, okay. So all the sports things would come in there.
Correct.
So we'll be given this fee schedule sometime later?
Upon the second reading approval, we'll then go ahead and ask you to approve this fee schedule. But we wanted to make sure that you approved the policies before we approved, we asked you to approve the new fee schedules. Any overall strategy that, you know, we're trying to increase our revenue? We want to start charging nonprofit groups not related to the rec department.
Could you just give me an example, like, what is nonprofit change?
Let's say there's a nonprofit basketball organization that's not affiliated with our recreation department and they want to use one of our gymnasiums, maybe for the spring. We could then charge them, as long as they can prove to us that they're a nonprofit organization with the credentials that they would need to do so, we could charge them a nonprofit rate. But let's say also that we have another organization that wants to run a basketball camp and they are a for-profit organization, but we're going to charge them a higher rate because they are making a profit.
So then the difference is we never charged nonprofit and now we're going to start charging nonprofit. Is that the distinction?
Correct.
Between the change of...
And the other difference is, and the amount of money that we were asking people to pay to use our facilities was a detractor. Another good example is our auditorium here. The amount of money to use our auditorium scared many, many theater production companies away from us. Those are nonprofit theater production companies as well as profit theater production companies. We'd like to market them. We'd like to get them to use our facilities at what we feel is a reasonable rate. We feel that by having a reasonable rate, we'll be able to attract people to our facilities.
Okay. All right. And then I have a question on the technology and, I don't know what page it's on, you could probably give me a general question. There was a very clear distinction between certified staff and non-certified staff and texting issues. So the one question I have, suppose we had a coach that was a non-certificated staff and he wasn't, like, on our staff. Are you saying that person can not text because they were not certificated?
Correct.
All right, now, and if so, if they're a coach and they're on our staff and they're non-certificated, then they can't text either.
And the language reflects legislation, too, in the sense that if you are, if you are a certified staff member, there is a plausible reason for you electronically communicating with a student. Okay? But there are guidelines for the manner in which you can and the reason in which you should be electronically communicating with a student. However, if you are a non-certified staff member, there really is no reason why you should be communicating via electronically with a student.
But that was with a student, but it said you can text the group. So I'm saying, like, if you had a practice that was canceled, can that coach text?
That's fine, yes, that's fine.
Even if they're non-certificated?
No. We want the head coaches. The head coaches are all certificated. We would want a head coach texting that to them.
Okay, well, head coach, so in other words, like, the middle school coach is not considered a head coach. So if the middle school coach wants to change practice, he has to go to the high school head coach and tell them to send the text? Is that how it's going to work?
If the middle school coach is certificated, the middle school coach will do it.
And if they're not?
It's very rare that any of our head coaches are not certificated.
But it has happened.
It has in the past, yes, but it's very rare and it's more than likely not going to be something that happens in the future. And you see within that language, too, that sending a general text to the team is okay. But engaging in one-on-one texting with our players, you can see in that language is prohibited.
Right, but I thought it also said if you were non-certificated, you can't send to a team either.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
All right, so if, you're saying we're not going to have coaches like that in the future?
Correct.
Or they're going to go to the high school head coach to do it?
Correct. Or the building principal, any, you know, another certificated staff member.
Okay, now, what about board members? They were lumped in sort of with staff. Can a non-certificated person text us?
Can a non-certificated person, this pertains to students.
Only to students, because it specifically mentioned the board, too.
I think it dealt with board members texting students. I don't think it dealt with...
That's okay for staff, not for, as long as it's not students.
Yeah, and again, maybe you can find the language that you're referring to, but I don't agree with that.
You could always have the right to text another adult.
Yeah, the intent here is to protect the students.
Only to students, okay, all right.
The board members must abide by the social networking policies, you know, that we hold our teachers accountable to.
But only, so it's only a student issue?
Correct, correct. This is to, this is cyber safety to protect our students.
Thank you.
Any other questions on governance? Okay, Vision 20 Personnel, 2030 Personnel. Number one, we're asking you to approve the retirement of Mary McAvoy, an occupational therapist, and I apologize, I do not have a summary tonight for Ms. McAvoy, but I will be giving a summary for her on January 20th. Number two, we have approval of the resignation of a replacement English teacher at the high school. Number three, we're asking you to approve two leaves of absence. Number four, we're asking you to approve the transfer of a night custodian from the Eisenhower School to the Wilson School. Number six and seven, we have some non-certified and certified staff appointments, including Nicholas Basoli, interim athletic director, that can be found on page 13. And number eight, we have approval of professional days, which can be found on pages 13 and 14.
I have one other question.
Yes.
To technology. It stated in there that there was supposed to be, I don't know if this is the same as on my computer, but I wrote down that it was on page seven of 11 where the board attorney gives an orientation. And I don't ever, is that, were we going to do that? That's right at the bottom in the last paragraph?
The board attorney should provide a similar orientation to board members.
Mr. Bush, I think you have to orient us.
At first, I'd have to know exactly what it is that you're talking about.
I don't think you have to do it now, but...
It's the Children Internet Protection Act. That's what all drives all this. And I just think at a board meeting, just a professional reminder of the responsibilities about texting would suffice.
Absolutely.
Any questions on Vision 2030 Personnel? Okay, I'd like to close my superintendent's report overview by making a brief statement beyond the superintendent's report. You've heard and you've witnessed a pretty engaging video about Vision 2030, and you've listened to some very passionate and committed educational leaders talk about some of the goals that they have already established within Vision 2030 and the funding plan they have to achieve some of those goals. I would be remiss right now if I didn't also express my belief that athletics... I would be remiss right now if I didn't also express my belief that athletics are an important part of Vision 20-30, particularly here in the SAVO community. Furthermore, I believe very strongly, after the past several months, that football is a very, very important part of our athletic programs and of our community. And therefore, in consultation with our Board of Education, I'm pleased to announce to you this evening that we will have a 2015 football season. Thank you. Any further comments for the board about the superintendent's agenda? If I open up the public for comment?
Page 13, number seven, I'm going to vote no on Nicholas Bezuli.
Okay, well, just when you get to it, you can make that exception.
I'm sorry?
Just when you cast your vote, you can.
Okay.
Well, Mr. McEnroe, we've been doing it wherever you are.
Okay, all right, Mrs. Backo is going to vote no on page 13, item seven, Nicholas Bezuli.
Mr. McEnroe, can I ask if there's a reason why? I mean, do we need to go into executive?
No, I just, I'm not happy with the $500.
It's the fee.
It's the fee.
Okay, okay. Mister, anybody else?
That's the fee.
Okay. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public for anything that's on the superintendent's agenda. Be mindful that once we approve the superintendent's agenda, we will open up to the public again for any business that may come before the board. So at this time, if anybody has any questions or comments about what's on the superintendent's agenda, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Molly Lewandowski, 112 Whitehead Avenue. I have a couple of questions and/or concerns. The calendar, there's one day prior to the students coming in. It's practically impossible for elementary school teachers to get prepared and have our opening day trainings and department meetings. And it's also in our contracts that we have two days prior to the students for our extra days with staff. The other question I had was in regards to the policy. It said that all students will have PE at this time. Kindergarten does not. Is that changing?
That is something that would definitely be looked into.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any questions or comments on the agenda items?
I have a question. Can I still ask?
Sure, sure. Mrs. Kilcombs coming up. Good, Mrs. Kilcombs, good.
I just want to follow up with Mollyne's question. Did, normally the calendar goes through the SEA before it comes here. Did that happen?
Yes, it was.
Okay, just...
Mrs. Kilcombs.
Barbara Kilcombs. My comment is about $500 a day for an interim athletic director. You remember, I was very vocal when we were paying a substitute principal for the high school $500 a day, and I found that extremely excessive. And so, as a matter of fact, so did the public, the residents of the community, because when I mentioned it in one of my letters, I was questioned by a lot of people, saying they thought that was extremely excessive. Now, for athletic director, $500 a day for six months, I find that excessive. I don't know if this is a going rate for athletic director, but someone that's temporary and interim, I still find it extremely excessive. So there's no comment about why we are paying $500 a day? Is this hard to come by or, I mean, for, that's a lot of money, $10,000 a month to be paying someone?
Thank you, Mrs. Kilcombs. Yes, you know, we've had the opportunity to interview really, really very fine candidates, and we felt that the candidate that we asked our board this evening to approve was the candidate that we really needed so that we can overcome some of the obstacles that we have right now, as well as some of the challenges that we'll be confronted with as we begin to close out this school year. While you might find that salary too big, high, it's comparable to an athletic director's salary when broken down by day, very comparable. Also, we are paying by the day, meaning that if the gentleman does not work, he does not get paid. There are no vacation days, there are no personal days, there are no school calendar days. It's just based upon the number of days that the person works.
Did the athletic director work 12 months of the year or was his schedule just part of the school year?
He was a 12-month employee.
And so apparently his salary was $120,000 a year? I think I read something in the media, it was something like $95,000.
The salary is of public knowledge, but the media was incorrect.
I see. Another item that you have is the policy for board members on social networking. And I noticed when we had this total football scandal, that the president of the board and vice president of the board did on Facebook, announced that there was not going to be a football cancel, or they announced the cancellation. And that was prior to the superintendent announcing it. So my question is, for policy, and it went all over Facebook, and that people knew from the president and vice president of the board on Facebook that there was not going to be football, before the announcement came out that the superintendent was canceling it?
That's not true, Mrs. Kilcombs. I never announced there was not going to be football before Dr. Labby announced.
And I never posted it either, and if someone has a copy of that post, please send it to me.
Apparently it was on Facebook.
And I'm, Mrs. Kilcombs, I'm not commenting on what people...
I'm not on Facebook, so I don't know.
No, I'm not commenting on what people may have said that they thought I said. I'm saying that I did not post anything on Facebook regarding this.
Well, my question is, who sets the policy or makes the announcement? Is, does it come from the board president or does it come from the superintendent?
Well, I would, it's always been my position, it comes from the superintendent. The superintendent runs the school district, and that's why Dr. Labby announced that we're going to have a, a season upcoming.
Okay.
You know, social media, as many good things as it has been involved with, and you know, when Sandy hit here, it was a godsend. You know, social media has presented, you know, a problem too sometimes. People get on there and they say things that, and that's true. Unlike you, Mrs. Kilcombs, you do have some comment. I don't have a Facebook either.
Yeah.
But I, I understand, you know, and do we need to have a policy on every aspect? I think people need to apply just what I call a good, solid, common sense and judgment when these things don't. But to answer your question, those, those types of things that are policy announcements coming from the school district comes directly from the superintendent's schools.
Well, that's good to hear, because there's a lot of false things that are sent out on Facebook.
I agree.
And it stirs up the public, and it even stirs up the media. And I think there should be a set policy of where it comes from. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kilcombs. Anyone else from the public on the agenda items only? Again, I will open up the public for any comments or business may come before this board. Seeing none, I'll close the public portion, and I will accept a motion to accept and file the superintendent's report, including all the vision instructions. Any board members have any committee things before we approve them? No, we just had a 20-30 student achievement committee. Mrs. Bloom, you want to just?
Yes, we did. I'll just quickly run through the agenda. We discussed the request that the middle school students attend the spring musical, and the decision was to adhere to Mr. Kubik's wishes and not do that because they found that it was too disruptive to the middle school students, and also it incurred more time for the high school students having to perform those matinees. We also discussed the never-ending concern over honors physics. We are going on the supervisor's advice that there is no problem. However, looking to the future, we're planning to do a prerequisite test to see if the children do have the math background that they need to take that course, and it's all going to be linked into the new STEM approach to education. We have also discussed the AP exams, whether or not the children should be required to take the exam. We're still talking about that, and if they don't take the exam, would they get the honors credit or the AP credit? We also discussed the elementary schools being put on a K to V kind of curriculum, where from kindergarten through second grade, they will stay with one teacher. We also discussed that the three through five language arts and social studies teachers would be the same. And a wonderful note here was no more paper report cards. Everything will be on the portal, and the report cards will be standard-based, which will be no letter grades. And the last item was the park testing. March will be pretty much filled with park testing and May, so we're going to see how that goes. And that's about it.
Any questions? Yeah, yeah, policy committee? Okay, Ms. Stock?
Policy committee met. You saw the, the output from, from that. We've got some additional policies. We'll be meeting again unless the committee's chair, in which case that will transition over. Also, I wanted to highlight, I know there was some question about the $500 for the athletic director for the interim per day. It's also worth noting that while we are spending the money there, with Mr. Byrne moving over as the principal of Truman, Dr. Labby has assumed the responsibilities on an interim basis for the director of special services, which means we're saving the money on, on that end. So I wanted to point that piece out. In addition, with regard to Facebook, just be careful what you read on Facebook, because I also saw that following the last meeting, apparently someone who was out and was at the meeting reported that I voted against Coach Novak from performing the duties of the strength and conditioning coach, and the minutes reflect that I voted yes. So not everything you read on Facebook necessarily came from a board member, and not everything out there is actually accurate.
Okay, finance instructor, Mr. Balkam, no report. Okay, personnel? Mr. Walsh?
No report at this time.
Okay, so at this time, if there's any other questions, comments, I'd like to take a motion to accept and file a superintendent's report.
Can I make a comment before we close this part here? I would just like to thank Kevin Syak for being present with the board for the past year. I think he did an outstanding job, and I would also like to point out that the whole Vision 20-30 was his concept, and I think it's going to move us in a fabulous direction for our students and staff. So I would like to thank you for the service.
Thank you, Mrs. So at this time, I'd like to accept a motion to accept and file a superintendent's move and report, and I need a second?
Second.
I need a roll call vote.
Motion by Mr. Syak, second by Mr. Walsh. Mr. Bakker?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Mrs. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McEnroe?
Yes.
Okay, under discussion, just a few things. I just want to appreciate the board's confidence in me to preside. As Mrs. Bloom mentioned, Mr. Syak, our longest-reigning board member, 20-some-odd years?
20 years.
Served us well this past year, one of the more tumultuous times for the board. But now at the year 2015, looking ahead, we're looking to get back to normal somewhat. Also, we've mentioned Vision 20-30. A lot of people, they hear this and want to know what it is, but 20-30 is something that, you know, it's definitely curriculum-driven, and some of the things that our principals talked about earlier in their presentation are things that were foreign to schools 20 years ago. And it's getting more and more competitive there, and 20-30 is going to lead us on the path, at least that's what we need to be talking about as a board of education. Unfortunately, we sidetracked. 20-30 is something that Mr. Syak's had a vision. He presented to us, and we all said, you know, that's, that's a concept that we ought to support as a board. And, and Mr. Syak has been very involved with curriculum, you know, he's been the past president of the New Jersey School Board Association. He currently sits with the national school boards, is the Northeast Region Board Director member, and he's also visited Finland, if I'm not mistaken, and analyzed their educational system, and has brought back some of that information to us. So I want, want to thank him. He's not going anywhere, you know, it's just routine business that the board, like other governing bodies, elects new, new presidents and officers, and that's all that this is a process of. So he's still here, we're still going to utilize his times and talent and his passion for education, and I too want to personally thank him, and I will be utilizing him as a valuable resource to this board. As far as the board members concerned, you know, committees, it's always a responsibility of the board member to sign committees. I'm not looking to overturn the apple cart here, but I, I think from just a management perspective, it's always been a philosophy of mine to utilize people where I think they best serve the board, you know, with their education, their occupation, and their time on the board. So I will be making some minor adjustments to the committees that I feel, I think will be more efficient and more effective, and I think will add to what we're doing. I will send it out to you as soon as I can, if there's any issues with that, you know, I'm a pretty easy guy to contact, please, please let me know, but don't on Facebook because I don't have one. So you can, and you do have all my permission to text me. You can, you can do that, so not a problem. So having said that, anything else for discussion before I open up to the public for, for anything? Anything else? If not, at this time, I could open up to the public for any business that may come before this board. Again, please be mindful of your name and address for the record.
Good evening, New York City, 23 Astor Courts, Southern New Jersey. I just want to say Dr. Labby here is fine today. No draft, no draft. Perfect, no. I just want to say something to the news and media here before I do anything, and to all of you here. We stand strong in SAVO as a community, as a school. We went through a hard time this year. People were torn in both directions. I just want to say, obviously, as you could see, our weak a hope brought us together. We're here for forgiveness, we're one school, one community, one people, one town, SAVO. We stand against bullying, we stand against any type of hatred and anything. We are such a strong community that is bonded together that now that we've had time, I guess, to heal, which is still going to need to go, we've become stronger and we've known each other and, you know, we are really a very strong community, and showing how much positivity also that has come out of this, unfortunately, there's not very much of it, but it's better than none. Let me think of the word. It shows, you know, some good in some people, and you know, we've gone through hard times and I've gotten hate mail, I've gotten angry tweets that, from other people in other states, completely unrelated to anything, and I just wanted to say that, you know, it's been a rough path, but, you know, we're on the way back to recovery. Also, I wanted to say, Mrs. Bloom, hi again. Hey, as in that news, I know can be quite distracting and it's, you know, something that we really would like to have, but unfortunately won't be able to have, but we don't really get to project these shows district-wide as much, or to the other schools. I mean, we send emails out, we're trying to make YouTube trailers, but I just wanted to see if there's any other way possibly without having to have to take too much time or just some type of plan that would be able to help get it out there a little bit more and kind of show, you know, a little bit without that. Oh, yeah, Vision 20-30. Now, you were saying about how you wanted everybody to know each other and, you know, get to know things. I can bet you right now about two people know exactly who any of you are, except Dr. Labby, because of the news. I go and people talk, I talk about things, and I talk about coming here and everything, and people go, who the heck is that? And I'm like, those are the people that are making the decisions. I'm like, you have a public opinion. I think that we should be able to, you know, kind of show who you are and, you know, what you do and, you know, like what your, or what the students are able to do and how they can participate and, you know, figure out, you know, what this is going to, how this is going to affect them and what it's going to do with them over time. So being able to, you know, kind of like, only we saw this video, and obviously it's on video, the video online, but nobody else will get to see how much work and time is put into that except us. And I think that it should be put more out there about all the different things and things that are going to obviously affect us in the future years.
Should be important.
So, um, thank you very much, and by the way, I was watching myself the other night, and I was like, how do I have the courage to go up here? But... But, we are done, I made it, and, you know, another well-done night. But thank you very much, Ken.
Thank you, Mrs. Santiago. I wrote down three times today to, today to, the next time I speak, to mention it, but I wanted to recognize Councilman Ricky Lindis, who's been sitting here up front, and I had three different times to put it down and say, "Don't forget to mention," and I apologize for not doing that, although you've been there all night. Any comments or any questions you have?
No, I'm just here to pass.
Okay, very good. Anybody else from the public like to come up? Mrs. Esposito?
Hi, everybody, Lori Esposito, twenty-four Little Bro Drive, Farrow, New Jersey. I'm really happy that the football season will be coming back, I'm sure the whole town will be happy to hear that. The only thing I feel is, we do have a victim here. I feel very unhappy about it, think we have a lot of parents that feel unhappy about it, I can't speak for everyone. To me, the real victim here is the children that had a problem there, being taken care of, the children that caused the problem are being disciplined. I haven't heard anything about Coach Najjar at all, and this was a man that brought our town to victory. He inspired our children, he brought many of our children to scholarships, so I just would like to try to understand where he is at this point.
Well, Mrs. Esposito, as you know, as a private Board Member, we can't discuss personnel issues, just as a matter of law and protecting of the individual. This is still a matter that's being investigated, and there's nothing we can mention about it in public.
But, I mean, like, how, I mean, the town went through this altogether, and we tried to keep our head high, and we've been dragged through the mud also. We're being left in the dark with this, and we have to keep answering for it, and we need to understand what's going on.
Well, as I mentioned to you, as you know, we cannot talk about personnel matters in public, and it's just something that I'm just not gonna do.
But will it be that we'll just be told who's replacing him, and then?
Well, I think the first step was, Dr. Labby announced that we're gonna have a football season, that's a big.
Right.
Okay, obviously, now, the next step.
I'm not our co-
Now, for the next step is, who's gonna lead the team? Okay, the Board is going to make that decision sometime in the near future.
But will the taxpayers have any say at all? Because we elect the ta, you know, we elect you in with the hopes that you'll go by what the, I mean, you have to make your own decision, obviously.
Right.
But we're voting you in with the hopes that you all do the right thing for us. I haven't, I just don't understand how you're letting this happen, I really don't.
Letting what happen?
How you're letting him get thrown under the mud, like?
Well, it's, as I mentioned, it's under investigation.
I heard you three times, Mike, you don't have to keep-
Okay, and you asked me three times, that's why you heard me three times.
Well, I'm saying, I don't understand how you could be letting him thrown under the mud like that, I don't.
Well, I don't know what you're talking about. All I'm gonna tell you is that if any question anyone asks, I'm gonna protect for the benefit of the individuals, I'm not gonna discuss anything that has to do with personnel. We can't, and you know that. And I understand, listen, I understand, is I, and everybody that knows me, whether you're sitting out there on this Board, I would love to tell you everything.
We don't need to know everything.
But I can't.
Yeah, we're not asking to know everything.
You have to understand, too, that we're-
You have to understand that we're answering for it, too, with every other town, every, you know.
Okay, we're in a legal process right now, okay? And we have to be very careful. We're in public, and I am not gonna mention anything that has to do with personnel in public, no matter how you phrase the question, Mrs. Esposito, I'm just not gonna give you a response.
But it's okay to put it on Facebook.
I don't have Facebook, so I don't know what you're talking about. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Anyone else? For the purpose of information, since this is a reorganization meeting, we started early, generally, we have our executive closed session prior to the public, but since this was a reorganization meeting, we started now early, and now the Board is gonna have to go into executive session for probably about thirty minutes to forty-five minutes. Action may be taken, depends on what business that we conduct in there. So at this time, I'm gonna close the public portion, and I'll take a motion for the Board to go into executive, and then Mr. Middo, you can view the resolution.
I'll make a motion to go into executive on personnel matters relating to the athletic director, and also various legal issues surrounding the Sabo War Memorial High School Football Team.
I need a second. Mrs. Reback, do you?
I just want to say.
Okay, I'll make an exception, because you're a regular visitor to our meetings. Can I do that, Counselor? Counselor, since the motion is in process, can I do that?
There wasn't a second.
Okay, it wasn't a second, okay, go ahead. I'll hold that thought. All right.
Lisa Reback, Seven Charles Street, and I just wanted to say that I am friends with the former President and Vice President of, on Facebook, and I do not recall any statements by either of them about personnel, or the football season, anything, before, before it was announced officially, so I would like to-
I understand.
I just wanted that clarified. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Reback. Okay, introduce the motion. Okay, we close the public portion, reintroduce the motion.
I need a second.
I need a second, y'all?
We have-
Okay.
Just make sure you're speaking to a microphone, so we're here.
I'm late, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's online, it's great.
Suzanne Green, seventy, Woodmere Drive. According, going along with Facebook, something was mentioned that the Board of Ed wants to move third grade to the U E S.
The Board is looking at all different options on what we can do about the overcrowding of elementary school, and that was one option that the Board talked about in the past, and I'm gonna have Dr. Labby address, I know you mentioned that in the last time.
Yeah, we actually discussed that during our last Board of Education meeting, when we were talking about the Silover Elementary School. And one of the considerations that we did mention was actually moving the third graders to the same cell upper elementary school, and then moving the preschools to the individual elementary schools. That was one of the ideas that we did talk about during that meeting. It's also one of the ideas that we'll be exploring with regard to Vision 2030.
Okay. I just heard somebody that mentioned that this was gonna be a meeting about that, and I, you know, I mean, whatever you guys decide to do, you know, whatever, but some people had it in their mind that it was coming for next year.
No, no. I think once the decision is made, that Dr. Labby is going to have some type of public meeting with parents and let them know what's going on, get some input, so.
Doesn't matter to me personally.
I know.
Personally.
Thank you. Last call. Okay, public portion's closed, I have a motion, I need a second. Somebody second it, quick. Got a motion, second. Roll call vote to go into executive.
Well, as sectionated, the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter two thirty-one, P L. nineteen seventy-five, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and there is this public body with the opinion that such circumstances presently exist. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Education of the Borough of Sabo, County of Mersey, State of New Jersey, as follows. The public shall be schooled from discussion of and reaction upon the here and after specified subject matters. General nature to subject matter to be discussed as follows. Attorney-client privilege, various legal issues associated with the Sabo War Memorial High School Football Program, and on the personnel, personnel included, but not limited to agenda items. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public as such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and as Mr. McEnam stated, the Board may be returning within thirty, thirty to forty-five minutes and may have action. Mr. Bakker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Brazinski?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mr. Syak?
Yes.
Alfred Betsadrona?
That's all right.
Mrs. Syak, Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. McEnam?
Yes. Okay. And now that you're back, I'll make a motion to return to public.
Now I gotta find my phone. Thank you, Dr. Labby. Thank you.
We open the meeting at nine oh, we open at nine oh-six. Motion by Mr. Syak, second by?
Second.
Mrs. DePinto? Roll call. Mr. Balka?
Here.
Mrs. Bakker?
Here.
Mrs. Bloom?
Here.
Mr. Brazinski?
Here.
Mr. Syak?
Here.
Mrs. DePinto?
Here.
Mrs. Strapp?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
And Mr. McEnam.
I am present. For the public that's here, everybody was given a copy of an agenda, addendum to the superintendent's agenda. You've had time to read it. At this time, before the Board takes an ax, I'll open up the public, any questions or Seeing no questions or comments, I'll close the public portion, and I'll take a vote to approve the Board Agenda Addendum.
Motion. I'll make a motion to approve item, letter D, number nine.
Any second?
Second.
Mrs. Bloom?
Okay, it roll called over.
Mr. Balka?
Yes.
Mrs. Bakker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?